Thank you for joining us for the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 work session for Planning Commission. Dr. Russell?
Good afternoon, Chairman G. and members of the commission. Well, it's Ms. Taylor. Chairman G. and Ms. Taylor. We have one, two, four agenda items, and we're going to start with Ms. Megan Gribble in an honorary street name designation application. Would you like me to read the ... I'll read it.
Okay.
M. Hill requests an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of King Street between Chestnut Street and Elm Avenue as Dr. Milton R. Blunt Way in recognition of Dr. Milton Blunt's contributions to the city of Portsmouth. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth, and the future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Megan Gribble, and I am the manager of transportation planning and the staff coordinator responsible for processing honorary street name designation applications. The application before you today is a request to designate a portion of King Street as Dr. Milton R. Blunt Way in recognition of Dr. Blunt's contributions to the city of Portsmouth. The subject portion of King Street is a 10-foot public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth that extends approximately 480 feet from Chestnut Street to Elm Avenue. This section of right-of-way provides access to surrounding commercial properties and church facilities, including the New Mount Olivet Baptist Church, as well as the King's Landing at High Street Townhomes Development that is currently under construction. The surrounding area consists of residential, religious, and commercial uses. Property zoned neighborhood mixed use, urban core, and general mixed use are located to the north of the property. Property zoned neighborhood mixed use and urban residential are located to the south of the applicant's site. Property zoned neighborhood mixed use are located to the east of the applicant's site, and property zoned urban core are located to the west of the applicant's site. The propo ... excuse me. The proposed designation complies with the honorary street name designation policy guidelines and is consistent with past street name change requests of a similar nature. The honorary designation will not cause hardship for residents, as it will not change the official name of the street or the addresses of residences and businesses. To date, no public comments have been received in regard to this application. The owner petition with the signature of the majority of adjacent property owners acknowledging that they are aware of the request and indicating that they do not object to the proposal has been received. Staff recommends approval of this application. This concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, did you have any questions?
No questions.
I had one. As I look at the qualification, this is very basic, not pertaining to this one in particular.
Yes, sir.
Looking at those 10 points, do we ... have we considered putting anything to make sure that the designated street is not excessive in length? We've done a great job with that so far, but I just worry that someone could try to designate a longer stretch?
Yes.
Or do we provide any guidance? And I notice it's not in those rules, but ...
We don't have any currently in the rules. You are correct. However, based on the request from last planning commission regarding potentially looking into a background check and other localities requirements, I have been looking at other elements of application process as well. Norfolk does limit it, excuse me, to one block unless city council approves for something longer in length. To my knowledge, I have not seen or given it, been given any information that other, any other locality in Hampton Roads does the same. But I'm looking at all of the different elements of the application, not just the background check requests from last planning commission, so that way I can kind of give a better holistic comparison to answer and address some of those concerns.
Perfect. I think I don't think we have any other questions.
Okay. Our next application is Use Permit 2506. It is a request by Dee Simpson with Kimberly Horn for a use permit to operate a parking facility at 2,000 Harper Avenue in the industrial zoning district. The property is owned by Metro Machine Corporation and is further described as tax map number 135 parcel 7. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as heavy industrial, and Ms. Patrice Branch will provide the staff recommendation.
All right. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Patrice Branch, and I'm a planner with the city of Portsmouth. The next application before you today is a request for a use permit to operate a parking facility at 200 or 2,000 Harper Avenue. The subject property is approximately 21.3 acres and is zoned industrial. The western portion of the property is currently used for storage. The proposed parking facility will be located on the vacant eastern portion of the parcel and will cover approximately 14.84 acres. The surrounding area consists of predominantly industrial uses. Port facility and maritime uses zoned industrial are located to the north, east, and west of the site. Scotts Creek lies directly south of the property with residential uses zoned urban residential located on the opposite side of the creek. The proposed parking facility will include approximately 685 vehicle spaces. Proposed site improvements include a pedestrian pathway, a landscape buffer, interior landscape islands, lighting, and perimeter fencing. The facility would be accessible via two 30-foot wide driveways along Harper Avenue. Each access point will include a sliding gate, a guard shack that will be staffed 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The owner also intends to construct a sidewalk within the public right-of-way along Harper Avenue to further support pedestrian access between the parking facility and the work site. As shown on the conceptual site plan, the subject parcel is located within the resource protection area of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area. The applicant has taken steps to avoid encroachment into the environmentally sensitive areas in an effort to minimize environmental impacts. A traffic impact analysis, or TIA, was conducted to evaluate the potential impact of traffic generated by the proposed parking lot on the surrounding road network. The study estimates that the parking lot could generate approximately 550 vehicle trips during both the AM peak hours and the PM peak hours, based on the anticipated increase in personnel. The TIA also recommends several improvements to the nearby intersections and the site access driveways. As a condition of the approval, staff has included requirements that the development shall comply with the recommendations outlined in the TIA. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial uses. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's requests with the recommended conditions. The proposed use is appropriate at this location. It aligns with the goal of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, and it supports the city's Blue Economy Initiative. While the proposed use does, the proposed parking facility does not represent a traditional heavy industrial use or the highest and best use of the land, it is considered a supportive use that directly contributes to the functionality and surrounding industrial operations. The planning department has not received any public comments, and I will stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? I think I have a question that's probably going to be more of the applicant. I mean, it was a very thorough traffic impact study, and it was, it seemed like it was under the assumption that these are all new employees, but is, I don't know if that's the case, or if these are some of the existing employees that they're providing better parking facilities for.
So in their narrative, as well as the TIA, it does say anticipated.
Right.
So I'm assuming it's going to be newer employees.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that was just my one question. Where are these people parking now versus these new spots? But, okay. Thank you.
All right. Our next request is Use Permit 2507, and it is a request by R. Hartman on behalf of City Switch. They're requesting a use permit to construct a freestanding telecommunications tower off West Norfolk Road in the general residential GR zoning district. The property is owned by 4740 Cell Tower LLC and is identified as tax map number 723 parcel 1.2. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation, and Mrs. Valerie Melzon will make the staff report.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Valerie Melzon. I'm a principal planner with the city of Portsmouth, and this application is a use permit request for a freestanding telecommunications tower at 0 West Norfolk Road. The subject property is located in the Churchland area of Portsmouth at the intersection of West Norfolk Road and Old Coast Guard Boulevard. It is located in the general residential or GR zoning district. The property is approximately 1 acre in size and is currently vacant. The property is predominantly wooded. The site is situated between a highway corridor and the edge of a residential development among vacant parcels, railway right-of-way, and industrial uses. Highway 164 is located to the north of the subject property. A vacant parcel zoned general residential is located to the south. Vacant parcels join the subject property to both the east and west, and a professional services office, which is an HVAC contractor, is located further to the west. That is zoned general mixed use or GMU. The applicant is proposing to construct a telecommunications tower within an approximately 3,500 square foot lease area at the northwestern portion of the property. The site will be accessed from Old Coast Guard Boulevard via an asphalt driveway. The site will contain a monopole-style telecommunications tower and equipment cabinets necessary to house the associated ground level equipment. The site will be completely enclosed with 6-foot opaque fencing, and onsite vegetation will be maintained where practicable to screen the site from all offsite views. The proposed tower is a monopole tower, 195 feet in height, and topped with a 4-foot lightning rod. The tower will accommodate a total of four carrier antennas. The applicant provided an aeronautical study conducted by the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, confirming that the proposed tower would not be a hazard to air navigation. As required by the zoning ordinance, the applicant provided a listing of all structures within a one-half mile radius to determine whether any other existing structures in the area would be suitable for co-location prior to proposing a new tower. The applicant found that the only structure within this radius was a city-owned tower at 4750 West Norfolk Road. While the tower is only located approximately 750 feet west of the proposed site, the planning department was previously informed that this tower is owned and utilized by the Department of Information Technology and is not available for co-location by private carriers. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The city's comprehensive plan designates this property for transportation. However, the city's comprehensive plan is silent regarding the development of communications towers. Staff finds that the proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the city's zoning ordinance to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The use provides a needed service to the public with minimal impact on the surrounding area and will provide three additional cellular space for three additional cellular or similar providers in the future. In addition, staff finds that no existing alternative facilities could reasonably accommodate the proposed antenna through co-location. To date, the planning department has not received any public comments in regard to this application, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
You said there was, there was no correspondence received on this one, right?
Correct.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is Use Permit 2508, and it is a request by Mr. Owens for a use permit to develop a multifamily, excuse me, development at 4054 Victoria Boulevard in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The property is owned by Varsity Development LLC, and it is identified as tax map 526 parcel 1.1. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use, and Mr. Bill Landfair will make the staff report for this case.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I'm Bill Landfair, principal planner with the city. This application before you is a request for a use permit to develop multifamily dwellings at 4054 Victory Boulevard. Subject property is located near the Victory Crossing Shopping Center, south of Airline Boulevard and east of Victory Boulevard. It is zoned general mixed use, GMU. The property is 6.26 acres in size and currently vacant, with no buildings or significant vegetation. Access will be from Elm Hurst Lane, a private street serving the Victory Crossing Shopping Center. The site was previously the subject of a use permit for self-storage, reviewed by the planning commission, and ultimately denied by city council in January of this year. Several constraints limit development of this property, including use restrictions outlined in the operation and easement agreement between the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority and Lowe's Home Centers Incorporated. This is dated May 4th, 2001. The applicant expects to receive Lowe's support for the residential development very shortly. Other restrictions on the property include stormwater and drainage easements and a VEPCO easement. The surrounding property is predominantly commercial in character, featuring retail sales and service uses. To the north, fronting Airline Boulevard are vehicle sales and repair businesses in the GMU district, separated from the subject property by a railroad right-of-way. To the east is a Lowe's Retail Sales and Garden Center in the GMU zoning district. To the south is Victory Crossing Shopping Center in the GMU zoning district, and further south is Interstate 264. To the west, fronting Victory Boulevard, are restaurant and service uses zoned GMU and a city water tower in the light industrial zoning district. As shown on the conceptual site plan, the proposed development will consist of one L-shaped building containing 96 dwelling units and one rectangular-shaped building containing 48 units, for a total of 144 dwelling units. The unit mix will offer a diverse range of apartment sizes, with approximately 22% one-bedroom units, 50% two-bedroom units, and 28% three-bedroom units, accommodating a broad spectrum of household types. There will also be a clubhouse, providing community and recreational space for residents. One vehicle access point will be provided from Elm Hurst Lane, which serves the Victory Crossing Shopping Center. A total of 232 parking spaces will be provided on surface lots adjacent to the multifamily buildings and the clubhouse building. Stormwater will be handled onsite via one of two approaches: an underground stormwater retention system or a surface detention facility. Approximately 13% of the property will be in open space, including landscaped areas. The property is not located within a flood zone, so there will be no flood zone requirements. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposed residential use enables the site, which has several significant constraints, to be developed in a manner that's consistent with surrounding land uses. The proposed use will help to meet a demand for quality, market rate, workforce housing in the area. Staff finds that with the recommended conditions, the use will be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, specifically in that it will support housing growth and diversification of the housing supply. The project unit mix will result in a diverse range of apartment sizes, accommodating a broad spectrum of household types. To date, the planning department has not received any public comments. Now, initially, we had received comments from the school staff indicating that there would be little to no impact from this development. That was revised in a memo to staff yesterday afternoon, and now public schools says that there will be some impact, and you have memos from the school board staff indicating what the expectation is in terms of the numbers of schoolchildren that will be generated by this development, as well as what staff increases might be necessary to accommodate that increase in schoolchildren. This concludes my presentation, and I'll now stand by for comments or questions.
Perfect. Thank you. First, I'll say I definitely appreciate the memo from schools, from public schools showing the impact. I would love to hear, oh, actually, it breaks it down really in here, that 40% will have at least two children, so this is, it's great to see this, especially we've asked those questions in the past on certain developments, so if you could relay our appreciation for that. Commissioners, any questions on this particular application?
And Mr. Chair, I would also like to add that staff, school staff, has indicated that they intend to put together a review committee. They're going to take a little different approach with multifamily residential developments in the future, and so with, through this committee, they're hopeful to be able to provide more efficient and more thorough comments on development proposals.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
The ingress and egress is all onto the one street, the Elm Hurst Lane?
Correct. Yeah, and I actually should point out, I noted that there's one primary point of access. There's actually a secondary ...
I see the side over here, but I can't, I go there, I'm over there a lot, just trying to figure out where that's taking out.
Probably right into the twisted crab. There's like a little bird right there.
That space.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So it's turning it. Okay, I got it. So like where the procel's ...
It all ends up in the same place. It all ends up on Elm Hurst Lane, which provides primary access to the shopping center.
Okay.
That's going to be really tight getting it out.
Yes, I would like to do a comment, too. I really want to piggyback on what you said. It's very important to have our various departments to respond whenever there is a request coming from the planning department, so I'm very pleased to see that the school system has responded on this. It's so important. It's not just for this department, and I'll say this to the city manager, it's important for all the departments to respond. I don't like to look at the applications and see from departments, no comment.
Sure.
Everybody ought to have a comment, because the clock is right twice a day. So everybody who works for this city should have a comment, something about what's being sent out, and I know our planning director is sending it out.
Right.
So if I sound emotionally honest, I am, because it bothers me when departments that really should comment are not commenting.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, city manager, I said, and you can do a quote-unquote on it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any additional questions or comments?
That's adding to a lot, because Elm Hurst is only one way coming, one way going, so that's a lot being added over there with no plans to, like, widen that street. That's it.
That's all, yeah. I mean, I'm sure you drive it all the time, but I'm there a lot. That's a lot of cars in and out, because imagine each apartment probably has two cars, per se, so you're looking at like 288 cars. That's a lot of cars, and obviously they're not all coming and going at the same time, but that's still a lot of vehicles in and out with no, well, there's a light on this side, and then there's a stop sign on this side, right?
Correct.
Going to Port of Christians, like a stop sign. Yeah, there's not a lot of traffic things there. I don't know. My only concern is all those cars in and out, other than that.
Sure, understood. Do you have a shopping center that is not fully occupied?
It's not. You're right.
And you also, I think the expectation is that, and one of the, I think the wonderful things about this project is you're going to have people who live within close proximity to shopping, and they'll be able to walk to that shopping.
If there is shopping there. Right now, I think we have a DTLR and a half-open grocery store.
But, yeah, the international market does pretty good.
Well, and then there's also the, oh my gosh, what's the bigger box store that's there? Oh, not the five below, even though I spend way too much time and money there. Ross, is it Ross? Ross, okay. So, yeah, the Ross. So, and I think one of the advantages of this, I will speak, because I do live right there as well.
Yeah.
I'm right on the McLean. So, to me, this also encourages improvement and, yeah, and more tenants to come into that shopping center, because you have proximity to a customer base who, you know what, I can just walk across the street and go get something to eat, or I can just walk across the street and go do some of the shopping I need. So that, I think that will also enhance that area, because that shopping center does need help. I mean, it's been for sale for the last 15 years, I believe, so maybe this can help turn that around. Okay, I think that's it. Questions at this point? Okay, thank you.
All right, Chairman G., we have an update for you regarding our subdivision ordinance, and it's one of two ordinance amendments that we anticipate bringing to you for consideration in September, September, October timeframe.
This is, is voice your power phone? Yeah.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Again, my name is Patrice Branch, and I serve as the subdivision planner for the city of Portsmouth. The purpose, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all with information on recent state legislative changes that, as a result, will require modifications to our local subdivision ordinance. So earlier this year, during the 2025 session, the Virginia General Assembly enacted changes that affect the local land development processes. As a result of these changes, we will be introducing future amendments to Portsmouth subdivision ordinance to ensure legal compliance with state law. Listed here is a summary of the 2025 Virginia Code amendments. HB 2660 essentially shortens the timeframes for approvals for Platts and plans. SB 974 removes planning commission and the governing body, approval authorization from the administrative review process for Platts and plans, and it assigns the responsibility to a designated agent. Virginia Code 15.22245 adds requirements for the release of performance guarantees, and in Virginia Code 15.2224113 adds deficiency review requirements for plan resubmittals. Listed here is a list of areas in which our current subdivision ordinance is not in compliance and will need revisions to comply with this code of Virginia. As shown here, these are proposed ordinance amendments. We will be updating the review timeframe to include 40 days for initial review and 30 days for resubmittals. We will also be assigning approval authority to the director of planning, or designate, in this case, will be the designated agent, and then additionally, we'll be adding requirements for the release of performance guarantees and including protocols for resubmissions of Platts for review. So this is our working plan outline. That includes steps and dates for our path to compliance. As today, I gave you a brief overview of the changes to the state legislative code and in areas that we are proposing amendments. We anticipate in September to present to you an actual application for a code amendment with a modified language for your review and recommendation, and then in the following month, in October, the code amendment will be heard by city council for final recommendation or adoption. And then, once adopted, we will proceed with the training and implementation. I do want to point out, there are other areas of the subdivision ordinance that are in need of revision. Therefore, it is possible in the future, come early next year, that we will be proposing additional amendments, following kind of a review and collaboration with other departments to get their feedback, and I will stand by for any questions.
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner.
I think if you go back one slide, and I guess the question is really for the planning director, is it assign approval authority to the director of planning or designate, designated agent? Define agent that is being referred to here.
So, the person that would sign off on the plans would be the planning director and the director of engineering. Staff member, and at this point, that staff member is Ms. Patrice Branch, actually reviews the submittals, develops a report, and coordinates with the applicant, and when, in her opinion and coordination with engineering, is ready for review, then I review it for compliance with their final letter that was sent to the applicant to address deficiencies, and if I find it appropriate, I will, I sign the plaque. So I'm the last party that signed it.
Designated agent part. I didn't know if that meant that you could actually go out for RFP, if you wanted, to a request for proposal or for independent. I was thinking more, did that mean, I wasn't sure what that meant for the designated agent part. That's why I wanted to see if we could get clarification.
I wanted to read you the definition. No, I want to defer to this deputy city attorney.
Yeah, it basically, that just refers to situations where the planning director's not available for some reason, and so the designated agent would be, her designate
is a, it would be a staff person.
Oh, it definitely will, because it doesn't, you know, clearly say it'll be a staff person. Does it have to be a staff person? I'm going to play advocate here. Does it have to be a staff person?
The party that signs the plaque for it to go to record does have to be a staff person, so when I am training other planners, I tell them, I say, this is like a check, you know, a cashier's check, and so make sure it's right, because once it goes to record, that conveys the property lines, it conveys ownership, and so that administrative authority to sign off, that can't be, you said, like if we ...
Send out externally.
Yeah, an RFP, so they would just be reviewing it for compliance and making a recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Will you be able to send this deck right here out to us? I don't think this was in I don't think this was in the packet.
Oh, the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can send it to you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Booms.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Trevon Boom, zoning administrator for the city of Portsmouth. In pursuant to Section 15.22310 of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator said notify the local planning commission of applications for special exceptions and variances. The planning commission may send a recommendation to the board or appear as a third party at the hearing. We have 10 agenda items that are scheduled for public hearing before the Board of Zoning appears on August 27, 2025. Seven of these items request special exceptions per zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-Feet35, subsection B, subsection 13, to authorize reducing the minimum required interior side yard setbacks from seven feet to three feet to construct detached, to construct detached single-family dwellings on non-conforming lots approximately 25 feet. Those addresses are 2714 Nashville Avenue, 2716 Nashville Avenue, 2328, 2328 Elm Avenue, 1615 King Street, 1619 King Street, 817 Garfield Avenue, and they are requesting seven feet to 3.5 feet, and 112 Fayette Street. The remaining three items are requested, the remaining three items are requests for variances per Section 40.2534, subsection B, subsection 2 of the Portsmouth zoning ordinance. Those properties are 4404 West Norfolk Road, and that is to authorize a detached accessory structure beyond the front facade of the principal structure. 2328 Elm Avenue is to authorize a reduction of the minimum required street or corner side yard setback from 10 feet to three feet. And 1634 London Boulevard is to authorize a six-foot-tall Oriental fence at the front of the property. These are the items that will be going before our Board of Zoning appeals on August 27, 2025. I'll stand by for any questions if there are any.
Commissioners, any questions?
Say none.
Thank you, Mr. Booms.
Those are all of the items that we had on the agenda for this afternoon.
Perfect. With that being said, commissioners, we are on recess until the public session. Thank you all for your service.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to a very important meeting today, Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, in the City of Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present by calling the roll. Wrong roll. There we go. Always prepare for a computer outage. Okay, commissioners? Hold on, y'all. Give me one minute here, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Hold on, y'all. You gotta give her time to open it. Okay, now. Five members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the July 1st, 2025, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Chairman, I so move to approve the minutes.
We do need a second, yes, please. Commissioner? Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
I do that in this time.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 1st, 2025, public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Items reviewed today will be presented to city council for actions at their September 9th, 2025, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, September 2nd, at 12:30 PM, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Planning commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so. Our first item, HSND-25-03 Innovation District. M. Hill requests an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of King Street between Chestnut Street and Elm Avenue as Dr. Melvin R. Blunt's Way, in recognition of Dr. Milton R. Blunt's contributions to the city of Portsmouth. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. The staff coordinator is Megan Ribble. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. I'm Marilyn Y. Hill, who resides at Five Cosmic Court, here in the city of Portsmouth, requesting, on behalf of New Mount Olivet Baptist Church, that was founded in 1922, an honorary street name for the fourth pastor, who was funeralized on January 16th, 2025, Dr. Milton R. Blunt, who served 35 years as a pillar of strength and guidance, formed the church into a center for the community and outreach, education, and empowerment. Dr. Milton Blunt founded and led numerous youth mentorship programs, nurturing generations of leaders, scholars, and citizens. Reverend Dr. Blunt initiated GED programs, after-school tutoring, and enrichment programs, given under-resourced youth access to academic support and life skills training. Reverend Dr. Milton R. Blunt advocated for social justice and equality, served as a voice for the voiceless, a bridge between city leadership and underserved communities. He embraced and supported candidates, city council, and school board to share their views to move the city forward. A few of Reverend Dr. Milton R. Blunt's affiliations are: past president of the Tower Water Metro Ministers Conference, the Sharon Missionary Baptist Association and allied bodies, past president of Victory Square Apartments, the Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Steering Committee, church and community in action. The honorary designation would serve as a visible and lasting tribute to a man who gave selfishly to uplift and promote unity, service, and education in our community. As stated, the 9 to 1100 blocks of King Street, which is between Chestnut and Elm Avenue, there would be no residents affected. The senior complexes used, Counter and Feaver Streets, are for their addresses. The vacant lot to the right is owned by Mr. Alvin Hills, who has given blessings for the request. It is our prayer that the request be granted. There are persons present who are supporting the honorary street naming. Thank you for allowing me this time, and I'd like for the supporters to stand, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say, my mother taught Reverend Blunt, and she taught him early in his elementary school life. But here's the one thing that I remember, because my mom was a great teacher in the city. I'm not saying it because she's my mother, but she was, she was just a very dedicated teacher. But certain students really impressed her. Milton Blunt, Reverend Blunt, was one of those students. And I'm gonna tell you what she was impressed with. As a little boy in elementary school, his mother always dressed him in a suit, like he was going about business. And we know he went about business as he got older. And I remember that, because it's not about the money you have, it's about the dream you have, and for the parents, how you instill in your children that regardless of what family they may have been born into, from the, from the most human humble, all the way to the rich. Your parents are so important to your lives. And I had to make that statement about Reverend Milton Blunt, because he's one of the students, and my mom served, taught, served really, for 30 years. And he was one of the students that impressed her, for his intelligence, for his mother's commitment, and for him carrying himself with that swag that said, I know I am somebody, and I know I'm going somewhere, and I'm a child of God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item HSND-25-03. I have no registered speakers. However, if there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. I'm Ernath Dela McSwain, one of your honorable school board members. My address is 719 High Street. Just want to talk on behalf of Dr. Milton R. Blunt, who happens to be my uncle, is my pastor, my uncle. And I just want to say that he, what everybody is saying about him was real. Everything he did, he did from the heart, and he did for the people. And I just ask you, when you're considering granting us this magnificent honor in his name, I'm asking you to remember that what he did, he did for the people, and he deserves to be remembered. It's not just a little portion of what he left, and what he always served, and I ask you to please just consider all the work that he's done. Most people know who he is, and you know, because he always did communities. Let me tell you, he was the one that, when people didn't have money, he would do their funerals. And I was his associate pastor, minister at the time. I didn't know why we always had to jump up and go do these funerals, and we weren't getting paid. I'm like, how much I'm getting paid, you know? Sounds bad, but we think like that. And he, you know, instilled in me, all right, come on, Bishop. He instilled in me that it's not always about the money, it's not always about pay, it's what you give back to your community. And so because of his guidance, there's a lot of us who walk around here, ready to serve, truly serve, without looking for anything in return, and that's the type of person he was. He served and didn't look for anything in return from the community. And I just ask that we at least give back a little bit of what he gave, just by remembering him on this, in this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Kerr?
I want to say to the supporters of Reverend Blunt, he was a pillar to this community. One of my fondest memories is watching him at Bishop Jerome Williams Church preach, fall, get back up, and keep hollering, doing what he doing best. He was, will be very missed from this community. And I see that Dr. Petilio has picked up the torch, and he letting his light shine. So Chairman, I so move to approve HSND-24-03.
25, sorry.
Second.
Who was that, the second? I'm sorry. Commissioner Jiggetts with the second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve HSND-25-03, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, UP-25-06 Harper Avenue. Dee Simpson with Kimbley Horn requests a use permit to operate a parking facility at 2,000 Harper Avenue in the industrial IN zoning district. The property is owned by Metro Machine Corporation and is further described as Tax Map 135, parcel 7. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as heavy industrial. The staff coordinator is Patrice Branch. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm David Simpson with Kimbley Horn, business address 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach. On behalf of the owner, we are requesting a use permit to construct a surface parking lot on Harper Avenue to support operations at the existing General Dynamics NASCO site, also located further down along Harper Avenue. Amongst other activities, General Dynamics NASCO supports the Navy with fleet maintenance and repair. When a naval ship is in the yard, NASCO needs to be able to adequately park those personnel associated with a ship. And so with the addition of this parking lot, they will then be able to support the maintenance of larger vessels. And so this will result in an increase in personnel traveling to the site, which is what the parking lot is there to support. As part of the parking lot construction, there will be two access points to the parking lot. Both access points will be ingress and egress. We did conduct a traffic impact analysis as part of this study, and both of those turn lanes were warranted and approved by city staff. In addition to that, we also will be restriping the westbound approach at the intersection of Harper Avenue and Lee Avenue, to provide a separate right turn lane and a through-left lane, and this will just allow traffic operations to operate a little bit more smoothly, getting in and out of the site with that increase in traffic. So that analysis was reviewed and approved by city staff. And should you have any questions regarding this application, we also have an owner's representative here and the site civil design engineer here as well. We appreciate your time and consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, one moment, in case any commissioners have any questions. I did have a brief comment myself. I definitely appreciate the clarity you provided in this, allowing you to service larger ships, because the question that come up during the work session, where were people parking already? So with that clarity, I do appreciate that. I do encourage, as landscaping is done, just because it's industrial does not mean it can't be beautiful. With this being waterfront, I really encourage the designers to really take advantage of that, that property and do beautification. But I will say, looking at commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes. Could you just reiterate again the material that will be used for the surface parking, please?
It will be a permeable pavement, and I don't know if we have more details regarding that. I'll pull up my site civil design engineer, but it will be a permeable surface.
Hi, I'm Robin Niss, also with Kimbley Horn. I'm working with Devon Simpson. So we intend to do a permeable surface. I anticipate that it'll be either permeable asphalt or permeable concrete. So it'll look just like a regular asphalt or concrete surface, but it will allow all of the stormwater to infiltrate in order to satisfy the city and state's criteria for stormwater management.
And of course, I'm going to make this assumption, the spaces will be...
Yes, they'll be fully striped. Yes, the spaces will be fully striped. As you drive by, it'll look like a typical parking lot. It just gives us that added benefit of the infiltration.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-06. I don't have any registered speakers. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Curry?
Yes, Chairman, I so move to approve UP-25-06. With conditions, please.
I'll give the second.
Okay. Commissioner Jiggetz?
Seconding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-25-06 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved five to zero. Our next item, UP-25-07 West Norfolk Road. R. Hartman, on behalf of City Switch, requests a use permit to construct a freestanding telecommunications tower at Zero West Norfolk Road in the general residential GR zoning district. The property is owned by 4740 Sail Tower LLC and is identified as Tax Map 723 Parcel 1.2. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone, and the applicant or representative is at the podium. You may begin.
Hi, folks. Thanks for having me today. So we are proposing to construct a, I'm sorry. My name is Rick Hartman with Pyramid Network Services. Address is 4296 West 196th Street, Fairview Park, Ohio 44126. I'm the agent acting on behalf of City Switch to construct 195-foot telecommunications monopole tower. We are proposing to lease a small area of the parcel at the intersection of West Norfolk Road and Old Coast Guard. The parcel is currently some overgrown brush and woods, and it's vacant beyond that. The proposal is to lease approximately about 3,600 square feet of the parcel. It will be, consist of gravel with some ground equipment within an opaque wood fence. The first carrier on the site will be Verizon. They're currently on board with the project and hope to get onto the tower as soon as possible. The site will also allow for three other co-locators. So the hope is to add other carriers down the road. Those are the basics of the project, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Great, Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-07. I do have one speaker, Donna Biggs. You will come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Woodbine Farms neighborhood. When I got the information and looking, is the trees, where they're gonna cut down all the trees and put that tower? That's one of the questions. And then, it also was remarked, city had a tower nearby. So I was wondering what the combination of two towers are gonna result in? And the other thing is, I'm against artificial intelligence. I'm gonna tell you right now, it's killing our country, our state, and our city. So I'm concerned also about the 5G radiation that's happening that affects everybody's brain. And so I just am interested in knowing more stuff than just what's been presented so I can have a voice in my self-governance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-07. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional questions? Commissioner Curry?
Yes. Could he, gentlemen, come back up? So what I'm reading correctly, your, the tower is for Verizon only?
Initially, it will be Verizon, but they will look to get other co-locators on the site, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T.
So what's more particular about this site where Verizon needs to go?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Like, what is so great about this site that Verizon needs to put a tower there?
I think what he's asking is this, has this area been identified as lacking proper coverage, or what drove them to putting a tower in this area?
Yes. Yes. So we get, we get search rings from Verizon, and basically, they identify areas where they need better coverage, whether it's capacity or general coverage. And so this area has been identified as that. And they do look at future demographics and a whole host of other factors. But that's, that's why we are proposing the site in this area.
I have Verizon at home, and that's not a lie you're telling, so I agree on that.
Okay. I actually sat at the site this morning, and the coverage was not great, so, for what that's worth, you know?
One more question. I don't know if this was answered before. Did we do the appropriate radiation of how much radiation we put out?
We, that's based on federal regulations. We can't put a speed on it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I made no motion.
So we're in need of a motion and a second.
Well, since you said it, did Alcoa make a motion to approve UP-25-07 with any conditions?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to second to approve UP-25-07 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to one. Our next item, UP-25-08 Victory Boulevard. Kay Owen requests a use permit to develop a multifamily dwelling at 4054 Victory Boulevard in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The property is owned by Velocity Development LLC and is identified as Tax Map 526 Parcel 1.1. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. The staff coordinator is Bill Landfair. Will the applicant or representative please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Carter, and I'm one of the co-founders of Varsity Development. The elder co-founder is Dory Finney Smith, the son of Portsmouth. We founded Varsity Development nearly three years ago, and we purchased this property that you see here on the screen with the desire to uplift the city, to do something to uplift the city. We're currently seeking a use permit for a multifamily to construct 144 apartments. This apartment complex will be market rate housing. That will feature one, two, and three bedrooms. Majority of them are two and three bedrooms, and with several community amenities. This is a project that would greatly help the crisis that our city, our state, and our nation is facing in terms of housing, as many of you are familiar with. It's also very special. I know I'm young, but I can't recall when two hometown people teamed up to do something of this magnitude to come in and help uplift the city. And, you know, this is not gonna solve the crisis, but it's at least trending in the right direction. And also, so I ask that you, we have teamed up with some industry experts, some that are well-known, Kimbley Horn, RBA Architects, and of course, Breeden. They're all on our team, and I have them kind of ready if y'all have some technical questions. But I ask each and every one of you for your support in this endeavor greatly mean a lot to me and to everyone else on our team. And thanks for taking the time to listen today.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions myself. I do see, as it's listed, well, first, let me say, we did receive a memo from Portsmouth Public Schools. So I want to go to record and say I appreciate receiving that from Portsmouth Public Schools, and it identified the needs that the school system would see as a result of this complex. It did point out that they approximated a number of students that would be living there. Can you speak a little bit to the amenities that you all would have that would cater to that student population?
Well, I can speak as to terms of like how many students we have, but I know one of my desires, another co-founder desires, would definitely have a place where like a computer lab, where we have a community clubhouse. So that will allow students, you know, you know, an area where they can do their homework and a place where they can kind of get some extra learning. And I know one thing that we're planning to come in is even like have some tutors come in and, you know, potentially help the students if they need, that's a service. But I can't speak to how many students right now because, of course, we don't know who will live there.
Yeah, and apologies, clarification on what I was asking. The school estimated about 40% of the locations would have at least two children. I think where my question was, you spoke to the computer labs. Is there any additional recreation, or what recreation?
There will be green space. Yeah, there will be green space at the apartment, and well, as a fitness center.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, great, thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-08. I do have one speaker, Ms. Donna Biggs. You may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in Portsmouth. I was interested to know, when we're building all these apartment complexes, have we done research about all the apartment complexes? How many units are empty and stuff like that? Instead of keeping on building apartment complexes? Look at the land. We're not having any agricultural zoning in this city, and people are being, are, do not have the ability to grow their own foods and be self-supporting. We don't have any canning office for people to grow their food and can. And yet, we're gonna continue to build all these complexes. So I am very concerned about all this land being used for complexes, and they just have no design of beauty. I mean, it's just like, whatever you want to say. We have the regional jail that's empty, except for one little section on Elmhurst Lane. We got all, it's like four big compartments. One is being used as a resource for inmates. The other three is huge that are empty. How come we can't use a facility that's already built for the benefit, to save money in this city? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-08. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is we seek additional discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Yes, I want to just quickly address, as they were stating about the land use and here, we're completely, I think we need to understand that we are in a housing crisis. I don't know how many times we need to implement that over and over again. When the housing crisis, you can walk up and down the street. I've been working in mental health for 21 years, and it is a crisis continuously, over and over, finding housing in every city, especially in Portsmouth. The land has been sit, you had your time to speak. Thank you. So we're in a housing crisis because I work directly with clients who are mental health and other things in this particular community. And we have an opportunity, a chance for someone to come back and to assist us. It won't solve the problem, but we're so grateful that it will at least try to assist us. The land is sitting there, nothing is going on, nothing is being done with it. And so to try to assist the city of Portsmouth, which badly needs that and uplift, particularly in the area, I think is grateful. And so when we're talking about nothing for farming and nothing for land, then when there is an issue, we don't complain about it. God has given us the resources to start something and make the difference. So if there is no land or nothing to start farming anything, that's for us to go start something and go make sure we give back to our community. Don't complain about something if you're not gonna get your hands dirty and resolve the issues in the city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to approve UP-25-08 with any conditions.
Commissioner Taylor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to second to approve UP-25-08 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Madam Secretary, could you go back to us for UP-25-07? Was that five to one? Did you state there? It was five to one?
It was four to one.
Four to one. You said five to one. I wanted to make sure. Yes. So I want to make sure I kept it correct. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioners, Madam Director?
Thank you, Commissioner G. Members of the planning commission, at your work session, staff presented you with a proposed scope for revisions to the Portsmouth subdivision ordinance. We need, as a procedural matter, the commission to authorize a resolution directing staff to move forward with those proposed amendments and authorizing the advertisement for the public hearing. I believe that you have that in front of you.
Commissioners, as stated by Madam Director, we are seeking a resolution. So we will entertain that statement? We need a motion.
So Chairman, I so move to adopt and the resolution that is set before us.
We have a motion and a second? Commissioner Taylor? Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to initiate this resolution amendments to the subdivision ordinance to be prepared by the planning staff, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero.
As it appears on our agenda, we have no new business today. Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, will there be any further business?
No, Chairman, thank you so much.
Dr. Russell, is there any additional business?
No, sir, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Hearing that, this meeting is now adjourned.